Um, let's do the blitz to the legends, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States. To the Republic. With liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, roll call, please.
All right, uh, President Fauqua.
Present.
Uh, Vice President Lex.
Uh, here, thank you.
Trustee Santos.
Present.
And future trustee Lagarta.
Present. Okay, thank you. Okay, so it's um. Christie, uh, it's Jesslyn here yet? No? Okay, so um, can I motion to move that? Or to hold that until they come in and then let's move down to approve of agenda? Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I moved it to agenda to be approved.
Okay, second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, approve of the minutes from our regular meeting of June twenty first, twenty twenty two?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, um, presentations.
Right, um, so I have um, a couple of of brief items. Um, the first one is uh, the California eBooks for All Initiative and I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see my my presentation?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, so uh, this is, as I mentioned, this is um, something that's very new. Uh, the California um, State Library is working on um, an eBooks for All Initiative, um, which is uh, it's a shared collection for all of the the libraries and library users in California. Um, and it's um, about equity and access to eBooks. They are, um, they've received some funding at the state level for this. And they are partnering with a nonprofit, um, which is something that's very appealing to us. We work with a lot of for-profit eBook companies and and they provide some great products, but um, there's something very appealing about a nonprofit um, eBook platform. And um, they are gonna be focusing on um, materials for youth, but they do have quite a mix already. Um, so uh, at the state level, what they noticed and you can kind of see the map, um, if I didn't include the the um, the legend, but uh, you can you can kind of guess that the the yellow parts are areas where there are um, fewer eBooks per per library user. Um, and so we're sort of in the middle in our community. Um, it ver- it just varies so much between um, library jurisdictions, what's available in the way of electronic resources. Um, and so this is, this is really meant to to address that. Um, so as I mentioned, um, it was the Black Gold Cooperative Library System, um, worked with the State Library on this and they're they're one of those um, coalitions of libraries, kind of like the Peninsula Library System or the Pacific Library Partnership where we are. Um, and so um, they they have the resources to take on something, a grand, bold vision like this. Um, and so this, this is a statewide collection, as I mentioned, and it's all library users with any library card and an internet connection will be able to access it. Um, the participating library cardholders have access to the shared collections, as I mentioned, with the, it's forty thousand titles, more or less, right now. Um, they, it's exclusively available through an app at this point, um, and uh, it's, I've downloaded it. We um, we have branded it with our own little logo. Um, and you'll be able to fa- to um, get not just the collection that that these forty thousand titles that the state has purchased, but it actually integrates with um, with our other eBook pla- or e- other eBook providers, so that theoretically you will be able to access our Overdrive eBooks as well as maybe our Anki eBooks. One thing that libraries have learned with the eBooks is that we have this proliferation of kind of third-party partners that we're working with. And it's, it's a challenge for for users and even staff to keep track of all the different places that you can look to find E-. Uh, one of the other goals is to have like an easy one-stop shop for for eBooks. Um, and then as more libraries are joining this um, co- collective, they'll be able to add their own materials to it. Um, we can all also purchase, which we have not yet done, um, eBooks from the system to add to it, so it can grow over time. Um, we, one of the early adopters, we went live July first, but we are still um, very much in the process of implementing it. Um, but I just wanted to give a sense of some numbers, the impact that it can have. Prior to joining, we had a hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty eBooks, more or less. And we can now offer um, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty eBooks, which is um, a pretty significant increase, fifty-two percent to our our per capita eBook offerings, which went from one point six eight three to two point five five eight. So it's one of the ways that we like to look at kind of what our per capita offerings are. Um, and as I mentioned, um, the eBook collection includes our Overdrive books as well, so um, people who are using this uh, app would be able to discover other E- our other eBooks, um, right from the, from the same app. And um, this is brand new, uh, we we went live July first, but we we haven't um, even had a chance actually that it implemented onto our website, which is gonna be the next step. Um, I mentioned here on the slide, uh, education, it's not just education of our users, certainly. Um, we need to make sure that that the staff are up to date and know that this is available and maybe we're gonna be doing that next. Um, so that they can start um, letting the community know about it and then, of course, um, we'll move on to promoting it, so. We are um, very excited about it, but it is uh, is just just now getting started, just getting off the ground. And even at the state level, I think that there's a lot of additional development in terms of all the backend stuff that we like to see as library users um, in terms of gathering the statistics, so we can analyze, um, you know, who's, how it's being used and and where we might wanna put investments in the future to ensure that it's most relevant to our users, um, those sorts of things. Um, so yeah, I I I think I I look forward to seeing how this evolves and grows over time. And it's um, also a really positive thing, I think, for equity, as I mentioned, um, because we do have have such different uh, resources available, uh, based solely on on where people live. They get their library card, um, you know, you get your library card in Daly City and you have uh, um, access to our offerings, but when the state does something like this, it really opens that wide up, so. Um, I just wanted to share that with you. Um, if you have any questions, please do let me know. I will try to answer. I might have to get back to you. It's something that we're, it's new to us.
This is really exciting, Sheila. Um, I think my one question was, um, since it's digital, I yeah, I think I'm just thinking about like school-aged children or even like high school students, like I remember like, like, yeah, for some of our young people, like they're starting to get access to eBooks. Are you all working with the schools to just kind of like let them know about this, especially the high school, Daly City?
Uh, we have not yet done that, but that's definitely something that we wanna do, but particularly because the state's initial investment was focused so heavily on materials for young people. It's slightly complicated by, um, we've put a lot of um, energy into um, working with the schools to get um, a product called Sora, which is actually the schools, the school, the children's version of Overdrive, which is our main eBook provider. And um, so actually, all of our school districts, Jefferson High School District, Jefferson Elementary School District, and Bay Shore School District have all adopted Sora and are using it. Um, so the the kids in those school districts are using that access, eBooks and that collection, so this will be an add-on for that.
Okay, well, can we um, please come back to this and since um, welcome um, Councilmember Jesslyn Manalo to our our or uh, board meeting. Um, we're going to go ahead and um, duty administration of oath of office for Ms. Angela Angela Logar. So I'm gonna turn the time over to Councilwoman Jesslyn Manalo. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you so much for having me this evening and first and foremost, thank you all for your service to our community. Um, to all the trustees here, uh, trustee Fauqua, trustee Santos, and trustee Lex. Um, I am excited to uh, do the oath uh, for uh, future trustee Lagarta, um, who has served in the past, um, and I look forward to doing that this evening and as always, thank you for your amazing uh, work on here. Um, so uh, thank you so much. And and so um, right now, um, we'll do the oath, which is uh, please repeat after me and raise your uh, right hand, say uh, I, say your name.
I, Angelo Logarta.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all uh, enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Welcome, welcome, welcome back.
Happy to be here, um, and happy to rejoin um, this amazing team. I missed you all, so um, here I am again. I'm looking forward um, to doing um, things locally in the community. I had um, just like a really heavy workload. And so I thought it was best to kind of step away, but now, um, you know, I got the blessing from my boss and my team um, um, that they support, um, and my family, of course, um, me, um, being a part of this great group of trustees and serving the community. So, thanks for having me again. Happy to be here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jesslyn Manalo, and welcome aboard Angela Logart. And I know that um, you were gone, but you were not actually gone, gone, cuz I knew you would be back. So, um, but you, you're back and Councilwoman Jesslyn Manalo, just one more favor. We have I think, two more seats to fill. And if you can put out the word out there, and I know that we have some, you know, I know that you guys know some candidates that will fit the chair, the seat, so that we can all be together, um, upload this work and able to move forward with the, with the work. So, thank you again.
Yeah, thank you so much, uh, for all the amazing work and congratulations, trustee Logarta. And uh, to all the amazing trustees and staff here, thank you for your service to our community and have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Well, welcome back. Okay, so now, um, so going back to the presentation, I it's amazing how the increase of the books to up to fifty-two percentage. That's, that's amazing. Um, we'd like to see that number continue to grow, you know, throughout the, throughout the year and, you know, um, I'm grateful that this is available on App. You know, what a simple way and it will be um, available to to the patrons who are really um, into, you know, looking up on the app. Um, just to hope and pray that we, you know, the ones who are not, you know, able to, available to it, to the ones who are not tech savvy, you know, the patrons that we can also accommodate them, you know, in a similar way. You know, having, you know, books there, actually, the physical books for them. You know, I like both ways. But it's, it's never fun just to go to the library and check the book out, you know, that's like the old, the old-school way, the old-tradition way. It's fun to take the kids there to the library, check the book out. Just having that feeling of why we have libraries, but hey, this is a new era, you know, we, we accommodate every patrons in the way that we can. So thank you so much, um, for that. Does anybody have anything else to add to the presentation? Any question, comments?
Uh, I just have a comment. Um, this is very um, exciting, right? Very innovative for and of innovative for our community, um, but also very new, right? So um, are, you know, um, is the staff that work in the library um, pretty knowledgeable of how it all works? Um, do you, um, I, I imagine you're gonna have people, patrons come in and asking, you know, for help. Um, I know, like, I always compare the bank to the library, it's very similar. Um, just like, you know, there's mobile banking, right? And we have folks that come in that they may not know how mobile banking works. Um, and um, but we teach them, right? We walk them through step by step. We tell them, you know, what to look out for. Um, are we, do, have we had any interest where people are coming in and saying, hey, um, you know, I don't really know how this works. Are you able to teach me? So we have not, we're at the very, very start of this project and that's, our very next step is definitely going to be making sure that that staff are knowledgeable and comfortable with it, so that they can um, help people with it when they hear about it and also let people know about it, you know, when they, when they're looking for something and maybe we don't have it in print or we don't have it from another vendor, an eBook vendor and so um, people will discover things, because this is where the book that they want lives, possibly. And then also, some people will just be looking for, for an easy, an app to use. Um, they can, they can read on their phone or their tablet. But that, we have not started that process and that is definitely the very next thing that we're planning to do.
Make a training, training the team.
Yeah, exactly. And we will, we'll do that before we start promoting it up for obvious reasons, as you you know, a lot of people coming in and not, not getting the help that they need.
Thank you.
I, uh, the State Library has just been so active recently and um, in doing these kinds of statewide things. Um, as I mentioned, you know, it's for reasons of equity, but also for um, communications with with patrons. We live in an, an area where there are a lot of various library jurisdictions and we share many resources, but there are definitely resources that aren't shared and so one community may offer to their residents something that isn't offered in another community and it just creates a lot of friction and confusion and so having something statewide is just really gonna make that better, I think.
Yeah, I have one other question, Sheila. Um, and I've been approached in the past by patrons who are like interested in wanting to like send some resource, like additional resources or like suggestions for like the Daily City catalogs. Is there an opportunity to do that also? As you all are building out the eBook catalog? Like for patrons, so like, offer suggestions or could there be an opportunity for some of that in the future?
So for, for specific titles or topics of?
Yeah, like if folks have i- ideas of like specific titles or topics of eBooks that they might wanna see on the Daily City catalog, like what would you suggest might be the best?
So we have, we have a form, it's integrated into our catalog, Purchase Suggestion is what it's called. And um, I, I will double-check, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that it should have, it has different format options, so a book or a DVD, you know, and it should have eBook, but I'm, I'm gonna double-check and make sure. Um, but yes, we, we will take um, specific title suggestions as well as um, subject area suggestions. And and we receive quite a few, actually.
Cool, okay, cool. I'm familiar with that, yeah, so hopefully can just send folks to the same thing.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay. Dr. Lex?
Yes. My up?
If you have something to share about the presentation, otherwise we can move on to the next um, on the item of agenda.
Well, yes, I assume you're talking about the B Project.
Oh, no, no, um.
Sorry.
Do you have something to add about the presentation that Jayla was presenting?
Oh, no, 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 I don't have any questions. I'm gonna do, give it a little time to settle and give Jayla some time to make sure all the staff are oriented. Then I'm gonna walk into my local library and say, show me how to do it.
They will, they will enjoy that.
Okay, and it's also, it's nice because it's statewide. And you know, like if I have cousins in another state saying, you know, hey, check out this book. You know, I'm able to look it up, so that kind of goes side by side with what um, trustee Justine was, was mentioning to have that catalog. You know, to have titles on it available, you know. Thank you.
Definitely will keep people connected. Um, I think it'd be a great activity for all of us to learn it, you know, um, and look into it and that way we could give, you know, when the time comes, give user feedback. Um, so, yeah, it's very exciting.
Oh, we can even put our own, you know, feedback or comments. We can start with us, you know, on our website, hey? You know, it's good to start from us. Okay, uh, moving down to grants update.
Let's be again. Um, I have a very brief grant update, just cuz I, there's a few things that have been coming in. And I'm gonna share my screen one more time. There. Um, so, uh, just a, a shout-out, cuz I don't think I've, I've done that um, in the past to the Thelma, Thelma Dolter Charitable Trust. Um, they have um, given us an unrestricted grant of five thousand dollars. Uh, they are a charitable organization that that supports animal welfare, um, projects and 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 nonprofits, but they, they've made an exception and have um, supported the library for all of the many, many years I've worked here and so, and long before that, so um, just wanted to mention that their ongoing support of us and and we greatly appreciate it. It's something that has usually um, supported uh, the summer reading program for children or other, other um, children's programs and activities. And then we also, this is a state library grant, uh, received a lunch, a library grant. I feel like the title makes it seem like we're serving lunch, but we are not. We're actually partnering with um, an organization that does, that is a meal site uh, for, for children over the summer, cuz that's a big one. You know, they're out of school and they don't have school lunches. Um, so the meal, the, the site that we're partnering with is um, the Bliss Camps, the Big Lift Inspiring Summers Camps. They're at um, Thomas Edison and John F. Kennedy Elementary Schools. And um, they serve um, preschool through third-grade students and the, the I, I think you, you may be familiar with the Big Lift. It's a, it's a pretty um, large initiative, um, regional initiative to um, get ever, as well, about to get eighty percent or more of the county's children reading proficiency by, proficiently by third grade and the the thought behind it is, you know, that, that you're learning to read when you're young, when you're um, in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third. And then after that, you're really um, reading to learn. So you go from learning to read to reading to learn and, and when um, the kids are not up to grade level reading by third grade, it really puts them at a disadvantage for being able to to achieve academically, um, as they, as they progress along and so the goal of, of the, that whole Big Lift thing is, is, is that reading proficiency. And this is just one part of that, which is these summer camps. And so we received a small grant from the state um, to partner with them. Um, we bought books and games and um, our youth services librarian went out um, to visit the the classrooms and the teachers. So it's a, it's a short thing. I think it was only four weeks this summer. Um, but it's something we've done in the past and will probably do in the future. So I just wanted to mention it and um, and again, another um, shout-out to the state for, for providing these, these opportunities. Um, this is, I think, the third or fourth time. And then we also um, very recently received a grant from um, the Daily City Public Library Associates and um, had thought that Director Pranay would be joining us, so I had, had left that for her. Let me double-check that she's not waiting to um, to join us. No, um, so I, I can tell you a little bit about it. Um, we received the, uh, this is the second time, a Gordon L. King Memorial Grant, um, through DCPLA. DCPLA has a, a private donor that provided um, some funds to support summer learning and that's greatly appreciated. And then they also, you know, they have their annual Saint Patrick's Day event back on Saint Patrick's Day. And um, they were able to raise funds to support the, the three identified needs, so those, those include um, expanding the um, the, it was started as a pilot project at the ceremonial library, the Lucky Day Collection. And they're expanding it to the Westlake Library. Um, so Westlake Library will now have a Lucky Day Collection, so they will be funding that initial startup collection and they also will be purchasing a piece of furniture to keep it on, cuz if you visited Westlake, there's not empty shelves to add something to. And um, and then they were also, um, will be providing funds to purchase an interactive activity power that um, will be for, for very young children at the John Daly Library, because John Daly was one of the few locations that didn't really have um, manipulatives and other kinds of educational toys and equipment in their children's area. Um, so we, we picked something that we thought would work well um, and be, you know, safe and easy to clean, um, to, to put in that space, so. We are very grateful um, to the DCPLA for once again, providing um, support for us, um, with all those things. Did anyone have any questions about any of our, any, any grants?
Kayla, thank you. Thank you for those many grants. I have a question for DCPLA. How much did we get from DCPLA?
So they, um, it would have been twelve thousand one dollar. Not sure why it came out to that specific grand number, but it was a six thousand dollar Gordon L. King Memorial Grant and then the cumulative of, of the fund, the needs.
Okay.
And it was accepted at the, um, they presented it at the last city council meeting.
Okay. It's the John F. Kennedy? Is that the only school they have the Big Lift at for the summer programs for the whole Daly City or they, they have it somewhere else? I know Bay Shore, it's not a Big Lift school, so.
No, they have, they, yeah, they have a different program. No, it's a John F. Kennedy and um, Thomas Edison, I believe.
And so that one thousand six hundred is only for John F. Kennedy or can it be uh, uh, or did you split it to, to schools?
Yes, yeah, we, that, that money came to us and we used it to buy the books and games to, to kind of augment their programs.
Oh, okay.
And both looking.
Well, that's nice. Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for all the donors and much appreciated to everybody that uh, donated for for the libraries and for the community. Does anybody else have a comment or a question on the grants before we move on? Okay. Not if it's yes. I guess that's enough. Okay, trustees report. Subcommittee reports. Dr. Lex?
Okay, well, uh, at our previous meeting, uh, we talked about the B Project and making site visits. And I was hoping that Justine would be able to join me on this and, you know, get somebody else directly involved and unfortunately, her schedule prevented her from doing that, so again, I was on my own. Uh, but I appreciate the good thought, Justine, you know, volunteer as much as you can. In any case, uh, Aaron Jackson, who's the uh, In any case, uh Erin Jackson, who's the uh Bay Area Regional Director for Albiol uh and I met about three Fridays ago. And we visited all four library sites and City Hall as potential uh places where a beehive could be located. And the purpose was to give Erin uh the ability to see the site and to evaluate it from her perspective in terms of how compatible it would be to have a beehive uh at that location and what the educational and community value would be of that location. And so she's prepared a report, which I just recently received. And uh I would like to share that with you. Now, uh I've never done screen sharing before and I see it uh at the bottom of my uh, you know, window here. So do I just click on that and then select a screen?
Yeah, if you have it open, you should see little thumbnails and you can just select the one that you want and click share, yes.
Okay, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Yeah, you gotta make him host. Or add him as co-host.
Okay, it should work now.
Okay. Oh, yeah, there we go. Super. Uh, let's see, Microsoft Word, I think this is what I want. Okay, setup? Okay. So this is Erin's report. Uh, and I'll elaborate a little bit if I remember anything uh to add. So we started out at the Westlake Branch. Uh, and I might add that all four branches were very warm and welcoming to us and very helpful, interested in the project. And at Ceremony, uh Shayla was the host, so to speak, or the person who showed us around. So thank you for that, Shayla. Uh, we did begin at the Westlake Branch. And as you might imagine, because of its location among shops and uh with apartment density and housing density in that area, it was the least desirable of the four library locations. Uh, as Erin says, not ideal for a beehive. Proximity to neighbors and foot traffic is not great and uh there's not a roof that anybody would want us to climb up and put a hive on. So uh that was pretty much eliminated. Uh, having said that, uh Erin did like the options at the other three branches. Uh, John Daly. I should say that uh Gina Maganini, uh who is the recreational services supervisor for library and recreation services, met with us, showed us around and talked about the space that could be utilized there. And Erin's evaluation was that there was underutilized space uh located uh, I'll say at the mid-level uh where there's a access to an outdoor, I'll call it plaza uh that's also accessible from uh the street, uh the sidewalk uh on Unipro Sarah or Mission, uh whichever part of the, you know, equation that is uh that uh goes up to that terrace. Uh, so she was saying it's underutilized right now, uh and that's based on what Gina was telling us. Uh, but that it could uh bring more community members in if we added a beehive and uh, you know, did some landscaping, minor landscaping and and gardening. Uh, that the ability to engage uh uh people in the community would be high. Uh, that it's protected from street traffic and uh that you know, it would have a synergy with the community center uh as well. The Ceremony Branch uh was seen as a very popular location uh because it's the largest branch and has the greatest number of patrons coming and going. Uh, it would be a great place uh with community room uh to host workshops uh of which, if you recall, uh that's part of the package that two educational workshops uh for a target audience we would define are uh offered each year. Uh, and a suitable spot was found tucked away uh above and Shayla, you were with us, so you can help me describe this spot. It would be uh to the what? It's above the fire station.
Yeah.
And it's by the loading dock uh area.
It's off of, off of Wembley. Um, yeah, next to the, yeah, between the, um sort of between the the fire station and the library.
So she had found it, it's a vegetated area and she felt that a beehive could be placed back there. It would be inconspicuous. The bees would be very happy and it would provide all of the benefits, you know, of having, you know, the hive and having the project located there. But the Bay Shore Branch, which was the second place we visited, was uh, you know, her top pick, as she says. And uh one of the reasons is that there's a flat roof area that is accessible from the library. Uh, there's a walk pad on the roof, so you wouldn't be spending a lot of time on the roof itself uh with the danger of damaging it. And there are windows in the library that look right out onto this roof area. So she says there's uh uh lots of, she says viability. Uh, and I think maybe she also means visibility onto the roof to see the bees. Uh, easy access and stay safe. And uh it might bring more people to that branch uh because, you know, the special nature of the project. Uh, again, there would be some synergy with the uh community center aspect of it. So if she were going to pick a a place to start, that would be it. Uh, also City Hall, uh she said that there was a good location. She says great location at the end of a uh walkway that dead ends. Uh, there's low visibility, but easy access for people to come and go and and observe. I would entertain any questions at this point about the various locations and her report. And uh at the conclusion of, you know, my portion of this, uh I'd like to uh ask Shayla what she would think would be next steps in terms of engaging the appropriate people in city government to look at this project, review the locations and uh hopefully say, yes, this looks okay as far as we're concerned. But uh do any of the trustees have uh questions or comments?
I definitely have questions about the town hall one. I was trying to imagine um where that could be. And I, out of what you've shared so far, it seems like the town hall, oh, I mean, just because I can't picture it, but seems like a town hall location like would be closer to where a lot of foot traffic goes and I'm not sure how close like we want a beehive to like heavy foot traffic. Um. Yeah, but thanks so much for this report. I, yeah, as you're talking about this, I was like, oh, I wish I was able to make it to the tours because now I have these bubbling questions. So don't count me out, Dr. Lex. Invite me to the next one. Um, but I mean, to me, like, what's resonating the most, though, from your report is the Bay Shore Branch. Like, I do agree, like, when I think about the location and um, I think just like because there is like a, like that garden area. And then I'm also just thinking about the young people who are often over there, like the learning opportunities around the beehive that I think we were all pretty excited about in the beginning. It seems like Bay Shore can meet that space. I'm that, those needs. Yeah.
Yeah, I think uh I would agree and I would, you know, speaking for her and I'm sure she would agree as well.
I went on the top of the roof with um one of the guys over there, Miguel. I think this was three, three months ago when we first started talking about the B project. And um and I remember also m- Mr. Stoty, Steven uh was mentioning that um any location, even if we pick a location. But one of the things that was emphasizing was, you know, if it was approved by the city or even um what the public works will think about it, you know, on that top of the roof in Bay Shore, it's actually a nice place. That's what I thought so too. But Miguel said that um that top of the roof, it doesn't need for anybody to be doing a lot of walking over there. So I'm talking about having the beehives over there and I don't know how many foot, you know, work will be needed to be over there. I'm just looking out for liability and um making sure that all those are covered. But Bay Shore will benefit from it. They will love it to have it there and just the atmosphere over there with a lot of nature. You know, trees and everything and it will be a perfect spot. So um, thank you, Dr. Alexa, for, you know, doing the walkthrough and able to actually to observe those um spots um could be could be a possibility for this, for the B project.
Yes, uh there wouldn't be a lot of traffic on the Bay Shore uh library roof. Uh, it would primarily be the person who maintains the hive uh or somebody there doing a workshop uh pulling trays out of the hive and you know, talking about uh uh the bees, bee ecology and so on and so forth uh with people observing in the library, I believe. Now, as I say that, uh, you know, I don't know how easily it would be for someone outside to be talking to someone inside. Uh, but I guess, you know, we could develop something where a person inside is talking while someone outside is demonstrating or uh, you know, acting as a partner in a presentation.
Yeah, they have those microphones like the in theaters, they put it on, you know, even on the tour guides, you know, one person will, and everybody's outside, they can hear. I can just see this happening, Dr. Lex. I'm excited myself.
Yeah.
You know. But as long as we secure a place with the approval from the city, I think we're good to go and the logistics will fall through.
Well, I think we need to get approval from the city uh before we go out uh really try to start fundraising. Uh, as I've mentioned before, I think there are a couple of fairly decent fundraising opportunities. Uh, but even if those were to fall through, uh, you know, it's still between the five, well, now the four of us, uh, I think we would have enough creativity to come up with ideas of other places to go and perhaps uh ask for support. Other questions? Angela, your little.
Yeah. Um, so um I actually didn't have the opportunity to view this presentation, so I might um circle back a few meetings back. Um, so in an elevator statement, um, well, what is the benefit from having this at one of our libraries? Um, I know learning opportunity is one. Um, wha- what else?
Well, uh, you've touched on a main theme and that is that libraries are community educational resources and this is an extension of that mission. Uh, with a particular focus on honeybees uh as a critical part of our food web and our ecology. And to address issues affecting bees like urbanization, climate change, pesticides, access to flowering plants, you know, all of those kinds of things that uh determine the health of bees and the hives uh. It would give people who have a fear of bees the ability to see them in a non-threatening manner. Albiol, which is a French company, actually has gone out and found a particular uh species of bee, uh honeybee from Italy that is particularly calm and docile and not prone, you know, not aggressive unless really, I guess, uh uh disturbed. Uh, so it would be a good uh way to perhaps make people feel more comfortable around bees and understand that if you're in the proximity of bees, uh the best thing to do is remain calm and relaxed and the bees will be the same. They'll reflect, you know, the feelings that you have. And this is not something that would necessarily be intuitive. So, you know, I think there are a number of benefits. There are the educational workshops. And for each hive, there are uh one hundred jars of honey that can be uh labeled or uh I'm not coming up with the right word, but uh labeled to represent the sponsoring organization. And then the sponsoring organization can uh give those away, sell them, uh use them for publicity purposes. You know, uh do whatever we would want with them.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
Dr. Lex, in addition to, I'm sorry, uh, Dr. Lex mentioned the um honey that will, from the bees. So correct me if I'm wrong, but the presentation, um, hopefully it's still available, Tayla. If you can please email it to the PowerPoint to um trustee Angela so that, you know, she can actually um view it herself too. But in addition to what he was saying, that the honey will have the local of the city. And that will be donated to, you know, either we give it out or to to the community members. I also think too that this um this project, um because I did ask the same question when I first had the conversation with Dr. Lex when he first introduced me about the 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 bee. What does it benefit Daly City or what does it benefit the community? And yes, it benefited so many ways. Um you know, we all live in a city that we barely see bees, you know, we don't go to any farm. Uh, we don't even know where, you know, actually what the process or the cycle, the life cycle of a bee. So it was good, the thing that is good to me is all those aspects and especially the um the young ones and how they are going to be able to do an educational form for the for the community. So people will go there and learn about bees. I don't necessarily like bees, you know, I got stung by a bee, but the miracle and what it does to the life of a human being. Because we need bees in our lives. So they need us and we need them. So, yeah, that's my my insight about the, about the project when I first heard it.
Yeah, the word I was trying to uh reach for earlier when I was talking about labeling was branding. And uh these uh jars of honey would be branded in a way that we would uh determine, a design that we would submit. And it can reflect not only uh the city of Daly City or the Daly City Libraries, but also uh, you know, our partners. And at this point, D C P L A is a partner in what I'm calling a joint venture. Uh, and one of the reasons that they're an important partner is that they uh have tax uh status with the IRS so that anyone who makes a donation to D C P L A has the ability to deduct that from their income tax if they qualify for that deduction. So I think that might be, you know, an important component of securing other donations from individuals or organizations in the community. Uh, Shayla, excuse me, uh Angela, it looks like you were about to ask a question.
Yeah, um and then just one more question, um Bill, um. Is there any upkeep where um for the staff of the libraries?
Not really, uh if there's any problem with the bees, uh you know, if the hive doesn't seem to be doing well, or. Let's just say there was a big wind and. You know, I don't think they blow over, but you know, if it blew over. Uh, the library would contact Albiole, they would send out a beekeeper. And that person would remedy the problem, uh so as Albiole says, they are a turnkey operation. Uh, we contract with them and they provide this panoply of services. Uh, including the maintenance uh of a healthy hive for the, you know, the uh. One-year period. So Shayla, I was gonna ask, what uh? Who would we begin to talk to in the city and how would you suggest we approach? Uh this in terms of making people specifically aware of what. Uh we've done and what we hope to do. And to secure support uh from the important, you know, departments.
So I had, um, when this was first brought up, I had had reached out to Public Works, because I think that that. You know, that's really under their purview in terms of the facility itself. Um, and so I I do believe that there would have to be a little bit of um. Retrofitting of the of the roof just to have even the foot traffic from the people. Um caring for the hive, um but it didn't sound, it sounded like. The the site that that you guys selected is is the most suitable from a public works perspective as well. Um, so actually, I don't know, but I can I can make some additional inquiries, but I I think that really that's. That's the critical component is um making sure that Public Works, you know, can um. Is okay with it, that it's not gonna interfere with um their ability to maintain the building or the structure of the building itself. Um and I I, you know, they they are aware of it, and so I just need to maybe formalize that a little bit and. And take it maybe one one step up the the rungs of ladder, the ladder. Um, and then I'll also touch base with Steven um. And and check with him, I'm a big component of it, of course, would be funding, because it isn't something that that we have in in our budget, so um. Yeah, I don't know, and it's an ongoing cost annually, so. But something else to be addressed, but as far as um city support for it, I I mean, I. I think people are generally um enamored of the idea, it's just just the. Practical component of 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 finding the physical space and making it suitable. I, um, one of the other things that the Aviole had brought up with the with the service was that they have a a webpage as well. That you can you can remotely check on the on the hive, so. Wanted to mention that, because that's another feature that that I felt. Um, even if there aren't necessarily a ton of people out watching the hive, they they can still kind of participate in the project.
Yeah, that's a very good uh point, and Angela, you would also be able to access. Uh, the Albiole uh website and. I will send you a link uh so that you can take a look and, you know, see what they do and uh. How they've evolved and what their ethics are and, you know, that kind of thing. So Shayla, could you uh just do exactly what you've said and then? You know, let me know who it is we need to be speaking with and I'll arrange for Erin. You know, to be available and to meet with the appropriate city official. Because she would be better. Equipped to answer any technical questions that might come up.
Okay, yes, I will, I will do that um next week.
Okay, super. Well, uh unless there are other questions or comments, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lex, thank you for the questions. Um, okay, so now we'll move down to item six, which is community engagement, library events and visits. Okay, so I'm gonna go first, because I went to Bay Shore and um. Uh, there were only two patrons at the time when I visited. I think it was. I don't remember what time I visited, I think it was after one or two. Um, and they didn't, you know, the Boys and Girls Club was not open too, so maybe that's why to. I visited on the on the fourteen, on the Wednesday. And um I was able to um. Had a little, you know, mini conversation with the site manager over there. And um everything looks clean, the the children's side, which is my favorite side. It was all up, you know, and the posters, the books. And I saw something new there that the children actually, it's a computer that actually. It's it's color coordinated on the on the on the keyboard, how children, I love it, I'm like, oh, man. How come this was not here when my kids were little, you know? Um, it was beautiful and um they were able to. Prepare, I was able to help promote their wild mind science, Bay Area wild animals. You know, calling the school to put it on their um marquee and, you know, the. Peninsula Family Service Childcare, it just spread the news with some of the the patrons, the families there. To to bring their children to that wild animal science, um. I spoke with her and just looking forward to for the big project, the Reed. Thing on the outside on the park, you know, it's just a matter of um days to put that in place. And for it to start. Um, I'd like to thank all the pa- um, you know, the staff. For continuing to show commitment and um being able to do the work. And um able to. Role model for the community to to have an interest in books. You know, and and if the place was inviting, it was welcoming. You know, I walked in, I I was, they didn't know who I I was, I was just walking in. I don't like to say, I'm Teresa, I'm the president of the, no, I don't do that until I ask, until they. She asked, she even like, oh, are you Teresa? I say, yeah. Just here for a visit, so yeah, Bay Shore is quiet right now, but I think. Now they go back to summer, it's back to Boys and Girls Club. I believe that if I pop up there sometime this week, there'll be a lot of patrons because it's all on for operating. That's my report from Bay Shore. Anybody else was able to visit?
Unfortunately not, and I have I have yet to renew my library card, so I gotta go soon, either way.
I uh I did visit uh the Westlake Branch, and as it turned out. It was the same Friday that Erin Jackson and I went to all four library sites. Uh, to my delight and surprise, when we started at Westlake. Uh Karen, uh the manager, uh said, well, you know, we're having a program on bees this afternoon. And apparently this is something that our libraries have done in the past. And uh, what's the name of the guy, Uncle Uncle Who?
Uncle Jer.
That's right, Uncle Jer and his very capable assistant. Uh, actually had bees in the library and uh. They were suitably enclosed, but quite visible behind the plexiglass. And they talked about the bees and a little bit about bee ecology. Uh, you know, some of the things that I'm sure, uh, you know, our workshops would cover. Uh, and uh I went and I was, I was concerned when I first heard. About the workshop, because the libraries had not been open for that long. And I thought, oh, gosh, we might not have much of a turnout, but uh. It really was quite a good turnout, I thought, uh somewhere in the neighborhood of forty to fifty people, about half adults, half children. Uh, the children were, uh at least several were very interactive, uh everybody was curious. Uh, they all seemed delighted, uh and Uncle Jer passed out uh these little honey straws. You know, and uh everybody had a good time, so uh it was very successful.
Okay, well, thank you, I know your report about the B project, Dr. Lex, you have went to all the libraries, so. That covers all the libraries for all of us, so thank you. Okay, uh moving down to board vacancy, well, we only have one more. One more to go. I know, so hopefully. Hopefully that um the words is out there, that that vacant, that seats will be filled. And um. I know, Dr. Lex, you continue the the uh mention that the process of, you know, of the applications. Again, though, we just, um, I know when I see any council member, I always bring it up to them on the side, not on the council meeting. But I say, hey, you know, did you see any application come in for, you know, libraries, you know, and. They assure that you haven't seen anything or, you know. But we'll see, it will get there, patience.
Well, I thought it was very good that you uh thanked Council Member Manalo. Uh, for filling one seat and then asking her to speak to other council members. To encourage them to fill the final vacancy, thank you.
Yeah, which is, I think she will, she's really good with her word. She's really good, okay, so um number eight. Report from Daily City, D C P L A. Do we have any?
We we do not, um, yeah, we had somebody scheduled, but um they must not have been able to make it.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Um, announcements and communications? Anybody from the? Any trustee with any announcements? Communications, no? Okay. And then agenda building for next meeting, so. Um, I think um the first one, we we need to. Continue to have the communication about the um. Our subcommittee report. I know Jayla will mention this to the city and then we'll see. From there, you know, Jayla, in inclusion, can, would you also be able to kind of show us like um a budget? You know, just a estimation or a budget, how much it will cost, um the timeline and whatnot. And then we continue to have the community agree, you know, visiting our libraries. You know, um, I know that every day is gonna be different. I think I'm gonna try to visit a different library this time. Um, and then our board vacancy also. And then, um, I know we haven't had a um conversation on our budget. Our fiscal budget, I know it's a whole new fiscal year. It is, so. If we can have a conversation on that or a report on our budget, is where we are right now.
Okay.
Fellow trustees, do you, anybody with anything to add?
No, but just want to second your request for the budget update, Teresa, and. You know, I think I just wanna like reflect the last time you all did that, like we were really able to have, like to really push for like. Staffing and stuff, so we would love to continue to do that for you all in outside of this library space, so yes, a budget update would be awesome. I'm even curious, um. Well, I don't know if this is too early, but I am wondering if there's any reporting you all can share on like the impact of having more staff. And like the increased hours, like what are, yeah, what have you seen, like, has it improved services, like, has it improved turnout, I know for like. Summer classes, it sounds like you all have been getting a pretty strong turnout, and I wonder if that's part of it, but. Yeah, if there's anything you can share on that.
Yeah, it's, it we're, we're still definitely emerging from the pandemic, it's it's been a gradual process, that's for sure. Um, I. So I think it's a little bit early to see a trend to the numbers, but I could I could bring bring that information if you'd like.
Yeah, that makes sense if it's a little early, Chilla, only if it makes sense.
You know, I have this gracie idea maybe to host a. Summer fun reading night at one library. You know, just music and and then the trustees with, you know, the community. I don't know, I mean, it's just a. Just the idea to throw it out there to, you know, to. To start summer with or to end summer with. Go ahead, trustee.
Yeah, I know, I'll I'll second that, sorry, my pup is in the background, but. I, um, you know, um, I was, you know, I I'm with Bank of America and and I'm really close by the Geller location. And you know, I've always been an advocate for um connecting banking to the community, because. We're, I'm in community banking, and so um I wanted to do something where like a back to school kind of theme. Where um and I was um, you know, talking to Sheila about it, where I could maybe have um. Sta- uh staff and teammates um donate like um school supplies, like pens, pencils, crayons, erasers. If they can, backpacks, right, and so um they they're up for it, you know, and I actually met a customer and he was like. Oh, yeah, I want to donate to your um giveaway, so maybe, you know, with this mixer that we're having, we could pair that. Um, I could bring some volunteers and we could, um, you know, ha- have a little goodie bags of back uh with a back to school theme. But also, um, kind of thrown by the trustees as well, um and reconnecting with the compute- community. Um, we're still in the pandemic, so obviously masks and social distancing and all of that. But I'd love to see you all in person and um, yeah, visit the community, um, so that's something I'm working on behind the scenes, maybe. Um, mid-August, a target for mid-August, end of August, when does school start again?
Every, I think for for Bay Shore, they go back to school on the nineteenth, which is always a Friday, I don't know.
I mean, it doesn't have to be right before school, ideally it could be, but I think at some time in August would be fine.
So that's, you know, like a nice music, a DJ outside, you know, and then, you know.
That, you know, we could give out to anybody that needs it, um, you know. Don't even, e- and like we said, even if we had excess or, you know, even if we didn't have enough, there would be. At least some people that could benefit for it, right, and then this could be an ongoing thing that I could get the bank to support.
It could be an annual library, you know, and trustee, summer fun, you know.
Remember, we had that one joint meeting and it was actually pretty productive, um, just deemed right, like, uh. Oh, we will learn to, but we we um revamped our um. Our understanding of the Brown Act, um. But that's always something that, you know. Compliance versus socializing, you know, we could do as well. Um, yeah, more more to come, we can expand on that, um. But um, yeah, behind the scenes, that is something, um, it it's re- it's something as easy as me putting a box in our lunchroom and. You know, having a picture and having people um donate and, you know, I I joke around like, hey, are you donating to my drive? And it, oh, you better go, you but you're on your break, you better go to CBS and grab me some pencils or some crayons and they'll definitely do it.
Okay, so it sounded like. Everybody's on board, I mean, if it's something that we want to do, we can, you know, discuss it offline. You know, on our um, our group texts, now we need to go back and start uh create our another group.
Add me to the group text.
Yes, we will. Okay, um, does anybody else have anything else? Okay, okay, well then. The meeting, uh thank you so much for today and welcome back, um trustee Angela. And thank you for, you know, willingly to come and join us. It's, you know, we really. You know, there were only three of us, then Dr. Lex came and then, you know, Lauren left, I'm like, oh, man. And then was so excited to see on the agenda that you were back, so thank you again. Um. Dr. Lex, thank you for the P project. Dr. Lex, thank you for the P project. Um appreciate it. Um Justine, your insights are always welcome. And you're right, you know, schedules, if we can't do it, you know, if it's it's okay. It's not the end of the world. Whoever can be able to pull the other side of the the rope, you know, will do it. Um Jayla, we appreciate you uh for everything that you have done in supporting us. We thank you very much. So we'll all have, stay safe and have a wonderful week. And uh we'll see you next time. Goodbye, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Hi, everyone.